President.
You roll call, please.
President.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Gaten.
Here.
Secretary Fritz.
Here.
Trenty Thomas.
I'm here.
And Trenty Zimmerman.
President.
Trenty Wazorick.
Here.
Okay. Conservation ethic to foster conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal three is to manage its area and archaeology, archaeological, and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimal preservation, education, and recreation benefits.
Conservation stewardship pledge. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number 10, we will help to build a sustainable and vibrant local economy by providing a destination for outdoor recreation experiences.
Great, thank you. Can you entertain the motion to adopt the agenda?
And move to adopt the agenda.
It is. We moved. Second is Iran. Take a vote, please.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trenty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trenty Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trenty Wazorick.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we have presentation and we're going to, I guess, the vice president to step up on this one. So we're gonna do a presentation, a reward or award for Cindy Scooproot and you are, I'm waiting for the verbiage. Is he gonna go up in the screen?
The resolution? No, I don't have the motion.
How about the resolution? Do we have that?
Do you want to bring it?
We're getting this new software package. Just in time. Yeah. Christie, can you help me out here?
Just one moment.
There you go.
You have the resolution. Okay, you're good at that?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
All right, so the resolution. Whereas the McHenry County Conservation District herein after referred to as the district, is a conservation district organized and existing under the laws of the state of Illinois. And whereas one of the purposes of the district is to preserve and maintain wildland and hold it for education, pleasure, or other open space values. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the district did authorize the creation of a conservation awards program to recognize the extraordinary contributions of individuals through the Conservation Champion Award and Conservation Legacy Award through Resolution number eighteen dash four three. And whereas Dr. Cindy Scooproot, hereafter known as Dr. Cindy, and recommended to receive the twenty twenty-four Conservation Champion Award for being an inspiration and driving force toward ensuring McHenry County remains one of the most conservation-minded, environmentally-focused counties in Illinois. Whereas Dr. Cindy has served as Executive Director of the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County, as a founding member of the Friends of Hackematac National Wildlife Refuge and the WA McConnell Foundation, as well as helping to form the Boone Dutch Creek Watershed Alliance, the Kishawaki River Ecosystem Partnership, the Fox River Study Group, the Nipper Sync Watershed Association, and is a leader within the Fox River Ecosystem Partnership. And whereas Dr. Cindy's leadership with the Illinois Sierra Club and work on multiple pieces of legislation to improve the environment has made an impact at the local, state, and regional levels. And whereas for more than two decades, Dr. Cindy has assisted the Conservation District with various advocacy initiatives and educational outreach programs to protect the quality of our drinking water and ensure healthy lands and waters. Her tireless service extended to watershed planning groups and involvement and technical expertise on McHenry County's Water Resources Action Plan that helped address issues related to nutrient loss reduction and watershed management. And whereas the people, plants, and wildlife in McHenry County are forever indebted for your selfless stewardship to protect their water, wildlife, and the way of life in McHenry County whereby your efforts have become a cornerstone of environmental advocacy, conservation, restoration efforts for hundreds of people throughout the years. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the district that it is desirable for the Board of Trustees of the district to approve the conferring of the twenty twenty-four Conservation Champion Award to Dr. Cindy in honor of the work and contributions to conservation in McHenry County. Be it further resolved that the President and Secretary of the Board of Trustees are hereby authorized to execute this resolution and the Executive Director is authorized to execute other necessary documents to execute the intent of this resolution. In witness whereof, this Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-two has been executed this twenty-third day of April twenty twenty-four by the President and attested by the Secretary of the Board of Trustees of the district.
Congratulations.
Excellent, congratulations.
Thank you.
First, thank you.
I wanted to say a few words. Thank you very much.
Just a few.
I think two minutes.
There you go.
So thank you, thank you very much, McHenry County Conservation District for this recognition. And thank you to my friends, the environmental defenders of McHenry County, whom I learned are the ones who nominated me for this award. So just a quick story. When Tom and I first moved to Illinois, we briefly lived in Grayslake. And one day, we were at Volabahog and I saw a newsletter for the McHenry County Defenders in the library. And I read that newsletter and I said, now this is the organization I want to join. So thirty-six years later, I'm proud to say that I'm still an active volunteer with the Defenders. And Tom and I were lucky enough, maybe faded, to buy a house in lovely little Solon Mills where we've been able to watch Glacial Park and now Hackematac National Wildlife Refuge grow and grow just down the road from us. And we've been so lucky to be a part of a McHenry County Conservation Community all these years and to see that commitment to preserving our county's rare beauty and diversity grow into now we have a tourism bureau that markets our region as naturally McHenry County. So I've been so inspired and privileged to work with incredible staff and volunteers over the years at the district, the McHenry County Conservation Foundation, the Defenders, McHenry County staff themselves, numerous watershed groups, and like-minded people throughout the states of Illinois and Wisconsin. And we've come a long ways thanks to all of you here tonight. So one of my favorite sayings is an African proverb. And I actually researched this today and truly, this is truly an African proverb. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. So thanks to everyone here in this room who have been on this journey with a loving and honoring land we live on and let's keep on going. Thank you so much.
Point of order, President, so we have a motion on the floor with Vice President Everard. We need a second.
We need a second and then we move. Are you ready to second? We'll do a vote.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trenty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trenty Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trenty Wazorick.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll go to Chief without having sworn in. One of our officers.
Okay, just like the last two will be short and sweet with this, we'll get a few photos and then we're gonna squeeze ourselves.
Yeah.
A very important moment in not only the police department and the Conservation District's history, but also for Daniel Vargas being sworn in officially here tonight with his son Adrian. And he's brought many of his family members and team members are here as well. So thank you, everyone, for being here. It's great to see everybody. Use your copy of that. Okay, before I start, just a real quick kind of a funny story about Officer Vargas here. We were at the trout, trout season last, two weekends ago at the hollows and doing some safety checks on some boaters as they were putting in and doing spot checks on fishermen. He had just finished step three of his field training program, which was all of the wildlife and fishing code and all that. So he'd just learned this stuff. And somebody right on cue came up and asked some questions about our hunting program, about the waterfall hunting program specifically. And normally I would just step right in and answer those questions, right? But I mean, this guy, this timing was impeccable. So I stepped back and just listened and Daniel just knocked it out of the park with his response to this gentleman. And it was just a reflection of not only his training, but his contributions already here at the district. He nailed it. So great job, Daniel.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, this is the official, the office, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel Vargas.
I, Daniel Vargas.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the McHenry County Conservation District.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the McHenry County Conservation District.
In the county of McHenry of Forsyth.
In the county of McHenry of Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer to the best of my ability.
Perfect, congratulations. And Adrian, once he's done there, why don't you go ahead and officially pin his badge on his uniform.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
That is, that is sweet.
We can have whole board.
Board, come on up here, board.
Sure.
Oh, no.
We've been practicing this.
I love that.
There you go, Adrian. Just stick it on there. There it goes, all right.
So that I don't hear it very often. Awesome saying. Slide this out the way. Very good. Three, two, one. I just took five quarters again. I sure as got it.
All right, one, two, three.
All right. Thank you.
One more.
There we go. There's the important.
Yeah.
Yes. Please, can you replace them?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks again for the opportunity, you guys.
Thank you.
Of course.
Serves an employee. My son always drives, remember.
Vargas she enjoys.
They went to the basic academy.
Oh, really?
It's, uh, Velma.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll move along to eight point oh. The trustees report. Any reports through committees? He's been out of town, Ray, anything going on there?
I know, uh, Francis did reach out to me for continued membership for that, so we'll be.
Okay. Hey, Kim?
It's all right, appreciate you here. I was gonna say, one of my reports is she gave a presentation at Green Brink's for McHenry County College and they talked about the different programs we are.
Yep.
And they talked about the different programs they have going on there. And one of the things that I felt was significant that wanted to bring up here was the college got a gift of two charging stations for electric vehicles. And somebody asked in the audience, well, how come they're not installed? It's costing fifty thousand dollars to install it. They've got an increase, they're getting used to average. They're gonna bring, you know, bring in a transformer and install.
So who knows what?
It's not, it's not so free. It's gonna be a while, I think. Yeah, so anyway, I thought that was, that was pretty interesting, but.
The kid that keeps them.
Yeah, but the other, the other thing they talked about was they really kind of unveiled that their, the McHenry County College will now be able to offer, I believe it's four college degrees from different colleges, Northern Illinois, Carbondale, and two others in Woodstock. So they're gonna have a satellite campus in Woodstock and people can go there and I think masters in education administration is one of the things. People are on a, on a track to go for principal. And then there's four other college degrees that all matriculate back to these other universities. So it's a really big expansion thing.
Yeah, just dynamite, very cost-effective. So your first two years, you can go to McHenry County College instead of having to go to a university.
Yeah.
You know, so. Doctor Gabbard's baby list.
Yeah, and Kim gave the presentation, so just looked out, I was gonna, gonna give her the accolades for the presentation. The other thing was the foundation meeting was earlier this month. They continue to find some strategic plan, working on, they're gonna pick out projects based on what we give them. And of significance, the, the Board of Trustees there for the foundation voted Shawna, who's the Executive Director, a bonus of six thousand dollars. I wanted to bring that up here because she's a joint employee. She works for the foundation full-time, but we pay half of the definite freight for her cost for benefits and wages. So that was appropriate to bring her here. Bye.
And that was paid out of just the foundation's, their budget for the.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have? Yeah, you have anything, our girl? Ron?
Oh, I do, I do. I think it was two weeks ago they had egg expo. Egg expo's at the fairgrounds. And that's when they have third graders and there's probably, there's nineteen hundred kids there over three days. And so everybody's got a little booth like the cattleman and the corn growers and the soil water and yeah, and they kind of teach kids or try and, and whatever you tell them is more than they know.
Yeah, actually, I did have something I wanted to bring up, but I forgot to bring to the meeting. But as you know, I walk up and down the Hebron Trail quite a bit. And I noticed someone was putting little hearts on all the trees. So, you know, and they're nicely crocheted, except there were like twenty or thirty of them. And I thought, oh, I wonder, I thought it was, can you give me money or some type of donation? And I took them, I actually removed them and I was gonna share it with Conservation District and then someone put up another twenty of them. And it turns out that my wife, Ceni, actually looked it up, that they put these things up and it's more just do a good deed. Also, it's with the best of intent, but my question was, do you want people starting to post stuff on all the trails? So at the next meeting, I'll, I'll just bring it to you. No, they'll intend it all. They're not asking for money. They're just saying, hey, you know, just do a good deed to somebody else. So.
All right, we gotta stop there.
No good deed.
Friendly, friendship. I thought I just loved it. I loved the idea, but it's just, do you want to, two hundred of them, you know?
Let's, we can talk about.
Yeah. Okay, and we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Good steps, depending on that too. Okay, move on to nine point oh. John, you made any report?
Yeah, just a few things. In the, um, this month, the we did a few proclamations designating May nineteenth to the twenty-fifth as National Public Works Week. We recognize all the public, the road workers and all the people that work on the apartment transportation and buildings that keep everything going. And then also proclamation recommending May as Mental Health Awareness Month in McHenry County. And one of the thing, uh, two of the things actually, but the ordinance imposing the special retailer's occupation tax of one quarter of a percent for mental health. So instead of all the residents of McHenry County paying the, the mental health tax out of their homeowners tax, their home tax, the property tax, it's one quarter of a sales tax, which is like one full cent per four dollars or twenty-five cents per hundred dollars that'll go towards the mental health board. And that will give them a little bit extra money than what we give them. We, we pay them like ten to twelve million. This will give them, we estimate twelve to fourteen million for the mental health boards. And we are taking that off our property tax bills. So everybody pays it, the people driving through McHenry. And it seems more equitable and they'll save the average Joe two hundred dollars on their homeowners bill. So and then the other thing is we're wrapping up the twenty-fifty strategic plan for McHenry County, which will come out in quite a bit next month.
Excellent, yeah. Good, thank you. Okay, ten point oh, President's report. A couple things have been to, uh, Land Conservancy held a beaver program, I guess, in McHenry. And it sort of gave the other side of the story of the beavers versus us trying to do the trapping and killing and all that kind of stuff. So it was interesting. Also attended the WA McConnell Ball in Richmond along with Elizabeth and Ken. And basically, I'm not with the law this long, you know? And then the all staff meeting was today, this morning, and Lloyd and I attended that and had some nice presentations. Andy did a great job on giving his story or our story of finances. So it worked out well. All right, we'll move on. Public comments number one. Anybody out there?
I'm not seeing any raised hands or anything.
Okey-dokey, thank you. We'll move on from that. Twelve point oh, the consent agenda, it's on to you.
Okay. Twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, to the whole. Twelve point one B, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Twelve point two, charge this report, twelve point two A, acceptance of charge this report for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, is presented. Twelve point three, first reading of ambiguous people's land acknowledgement statement, the staff resource guide. Twelve point four, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three, authorizing disposal of listed excess equipment and office items through a public online auction with Obenfeld Auction Service of Round Lake, Illinois. Twelve point five, resolution twenty-four twenty-four, ratifying the Conservation District's participation in the annual McHenry County emergency, emergency telephone system boards, Starcom twenty-one, radio interoperable ability grant reimbursement program. Twelve point six, authorization to prepare bid specifications and letting of bids for the Prairie Trail renovation south of Hillside Road to Lorraine Drive and Crystal Lake. Twelve point seven, authorization to prepare bid specifications and letting of bids for the Prairie Trail renovations north of Hillside Road, Crystal Lake, Illinois, to Edgewood Road, Prairie Grove. Twelve point eight, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five, authorizing the purchase of two Kubota utility trail vehicles from Johnson Tractor for a cost not to exceed forty-three thousand, six thirty-two and forty-four cents. Twelve point nine, ordinance twenty-four dash ten forty-two, accepting the twenty, twenty twenty-four hunting administrative directives as presented. Twelve point ten, authorization for the agricultural ecologist to negotiate terms for a cop lease and for the executive director to execute an agricultural lease agreement with terms beginning April twenty-third, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four on a newly received two-site parcel containing approximately twenty-seven plus or minus acres to present to the Board of Trustees for ratification. Finally, twelve point eleven, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five legislative program. So.
Yes, we have a second?
Second.
Ready? The move is seconded. Over the roll call, please.
Trenty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trenty Thomas.
Yes.
Trenty Wazorick.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Thirteen, thirteen one approval, so. Treasurer Gaten.
So we have the internal audit and there were three items that were requested to be pulled. The first one was for tractor supply credit plan vendor number T seven three seven four and the amount of fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. The second one was for vendor number U six five zero six for Ultra Strobe Communications Incorporated and the amount of six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and twenty-six cents. And the last one was for vendor number H eighty-five oh nine X gas super fuel for four hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. So thirteen point one A. And moving on to thirteen point one B, consideration to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So, second? Move? So. The move, you move and make the motion.
Yes, yeah.
Move and seconded.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trenty Wazorick.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasure Gaten.
Yes.
President Thomas.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. All right, thirteen point two. Sort of the day one. Uh, it's ordinance providing for the submission of a ballot proposition, so. Ordinance number twenty-four dash one zero four three, and ordinance providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of increasing the limit rate for the district to the voters of the district after general election to be held November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Okay, do I have?
So moves, and, uh, I'd move that it be, uh, approved by acclamation.
Okay, so that means that he may have exposed, so we'll go ahead and, and do the roll call, please.
President Thomas.
Yeah.
Treasure Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Wazorek.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I do have just a brief, um, PowerPoint, just because we're recording this and just to share, um, President Dom and Vice President Everard, uh, received this information this morning as we were sharing with the staff as well in preparation, uh, for this evening. So what we're presenting also online, um, Will Avager from Press for Public Land is with us this evening, and again, continues to assist the districts here, so again, if you're approvals, we'll be following through and, and sending us ordinance over to the county. But, um, this is a limiting rate proposition, uh, teed up to be on the general election ballot on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Three key purposes, which we'll go into, is protecting our water quality, preserving wildlife habitat, and improving outdoor recreation access for all. So on November fifth, through the, through the, uh, direction and advancing the ballot question this evening, uh, McHenry County voters will have the opportunity to vote to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation. So the three key purposes that are messaging and the reason why we are doing this is that with this water quality protection, the Conservation District will protect McHenry County's drinking water sources by safeguarding and restoring areas that filter and store our drinking water. They will also protect the water quality by protecting and restoring natural areas along our rivers, lakes, and streams. Second key purpose is wildlife habitat preservation. The Conservation District will preserve and restore essential wildlife habitat for plants and animals, including wetlands, woodlands, and prairies that protect wildlife species such as the sandhill crane, bald eagle, river otter, osprey, monarch butterfly, and bobcat. The district will protect additional natural areas throughout the county. The third and final purpose is for outdoor recreation access for all. The Conservation District will improve trails, enhance parks and natural areas, and increase outdoor recreational opportunities for all residents and visitors, including people with disabilities, so that everyone can enjoy the physical and mental healthy benefits of being outdoors. How will the Conservation District spend the funds? The proposition will ensure that the McHenry County Conservation District has the means necessary to safeguard our water quality, natural areas, wildlife habitats, and outdoor recreation opportunities, and that they will be protected for future generations. The proposition also allows the Conservation District staying within our purposes to protect land, including wetlands that protect and improve McHenry County's drinking water sources, to protect wildlife habitat and natural areas that contribute greatly to our quality of life and our physical and mental health, protect woodlands and plant trees to improve air quality, and to provide opportunities for children and adults to enjoy natural areas and disconnect from technology and digital media. The passage of this proposition will provide a right recurring funding source, which would secure the future of our natural areas and outdoor recreational amenities for generations to come. Now, as the board is aware, we offer residents quite a bit, uh, with our twenty-five thousand, eight hundred acres of open space, preserves that the water quality of significant wetlands, lakes, and streams, and restoring wildlife habitat for hundreds of native plants and animals within high-quality wetlands, woodlands, and prairies, offering hundreds of educational programs that provide a variety of outdoor recreational opportunities for all citizens and visitors to capture the physical and mental health benefits. Thirty-five sites, open to the public, hundred and five miles of biking, uh, hiking trails, forty-five miles of bike trails, thirty-seven miles of horse trails, twenty-three fishing areas, six campgrounds, seven canoe launches, eighteen sites of picnic areas, and hundreds of opportunities for wildlife viewing. So many assets to preserve and protect. So with the passage of the proposition, a homeowner in McHenry County with an average home value of three hundred thousand would pay just two dollars and twenty-five cents additionally per month for an additional twenty-seven dollars per year in property taxes paid to the McHenry County Conservation District. And as you're aware, only just two percent of a homeowner's property tax bill is paid to the Conservation District, depending upon which municipality the home is located in. Now, the timing of this, as the board is aware, through our sustaining the dream, is as we have this opportunity for long-term, we will have a decrease in our property taxes in twenty-twenty-six as the district pays off our general obligation bonds, which when retired will result in a sixty percent reduction in property taxes that are paid to the Conservation District. So a passage of this proposition will still result in a decrease of property taxes of ninety-three dollars in twenty-twenty-six for an average home that's valued at three hundred thousand, while providing new funding for the Conservation District to maintain, improve its programs and services to protect our water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. Familiar with, uh, year over year of what our total property taxes have been paid to the district? And in twenty-twenty-six, with the successful passage of this referendum, property taxes will be reduced by forty-five percent. Tonight is the valid language that will be advanced in the ordinance. This has been reviewed by legal counsel, as we discussed during the committee of the whole, um, both Chapman, Cutler, and Tressler. And so within the provision there, it discusses what the rate will be as well as the purposes that we stated before, protecting drinking water sources, protecting the water quality of rivers, lakes, and streams, providing park access for people with disabilities, protecting wildlife habitat, protecting forests and planting trees, improving and maintaining existing conservation areas and other lawful purposes. And then the rest of the language, it communicates to the voter, um, the amount to be paid on a hundred thousand dollar home. And this is the, the language that they will see when we go on. And so that's just a summary of our information. Included, uh, will be on our website, as well as you've got the key message points and frequently passed questions. And, um, we'll be able to direct and answer questions and what anyone has. Uh, today also, um, during our all staff meeting, and included in your board package is a PowerPoint that our general counsel and team presented on staying in bounds and out of jail, combining with epic laws related to referendum planning, electioneering, and other political activity. So please review this, and I will send out a recording. We did record that today, so you'll be able to hear directly from the presentation from the term pain that will be helping for all those reading board, uh, over the next several months. And that's all we have.
Great, thank you. Okay. The board numbers to the next, yeah. We'll go to thirteen point three, um, resolution approving their government agreement with McHenry County and then McHenry County Sheriff's Office for Police Department Dispatch.
I'm requesting that be tabled. Uh, we still need to work through a couple more details on that, so.
Okay.
We think the number is really close, but we're not absolutely certain, so we don't want to approve an agreement that has the wrong number in it, so.
Okay.
We'll bring it back in May.
Sounds good. Okay, fourteen point oh, executive directors' report.
All right, so included is our quarterly update on all of the work streams. Uh, so if there were any questions that the board had, uh, within the first year of the strategic plan, uh, we're tracking as most, everything has at least moved, not everything, but most has moved into motion, uh, with a few items already being completed, but on target with that. And then you've got our regular planning of, um, our project status of how we finished off the year. As we move into the next reporting cycle, we are internally moving some things around here for presentation, so we look forward to sharing that with you as well. Um, everyone should have received on the board, um, communication from Seekish, who is our auditor. Um, and so with that, they did require everyone to provide with fraud, it's typical, so not to surprise you when you receive it, um, we're not, this is part of our, our, our expected audit process. And then as they complete that, they'll be on site, and we probably.
Uh, certainly.
Two, and then we'll have a report, as we always do in September, once they finish that. And that is all I have.
All right, move to fifteen point oh. We've pretty much covered that with the trustees' report. So we'll move to public comments. Number two, anybody out there wanna say anything? Are you hearing nothing?
Apologies, I'm not seeing any raised hands or anything like that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um, I'll need a motion, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion to go into executive session.
First one, I'll leave there.
Um, yes, I motion to go into executive session pursuant to two C one personnel and two C two one review of closed session meetings of the open meeting at five ILCS one twenty slash one. Whatever.
Okay. Okay, so we have the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Move and seconded, go ahead, please.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Thomas.
Yes.
Treasure Gaten.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Wazorek.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we're going to executive session. Won't be any action, so thank you, guys.
All right, it is six thirty-four P M. Okay, your roll call?
Yes, please.
President Dom.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasure Gaten.
Here.
Secretary Prince.
Here.
President Thomas. Your, President Wazorek.
President.
President Wazorek.
Here. Now, we need to make a correct view.
Correct, we wanna go back.
Motion. Yes. So Ron made, or Lloyd made the, uh, motion, and we need a second. Okay. Second, second, Ray, Ray.
Yeah, we should reread it, just so we're fluidly here. I'm gonna go back here on the screen. Just wanna know, or read, I'm not sure if you can.
So Lloyd, we wanna read the thirteen point three. Yeah. You ready? More.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you ready for the reading of the motion?
That's just a second place here, I'm just trying to figure out, I think I'm gonna go ahead with that, but you've got it, so we're recording it, it's just I was trying to get up on the screen here, like this.
Ready, Elizabeth?
I'm ready, go right ahead.
Okay.
All right, move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash one zero four three, and ordinance providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of increasing the living rate for the district to the voters of the district at the general election to be held on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And I move that the motion be carried by acclamation.
Second.
The move is seconded.
President Thomas.
Yes.
Treasure Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Wazorek.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. By acquisition.
And make a motion to. Well, I make most join, to adjourn.
There's definitely time, there's definitely time to adjourn.
I think it's time to adjourn, yeah. Okay, we need a second?
Second.
Ron, move and seconded, adjourn.
Treasure Gaten.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Wazorek.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
President Thomas.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.